Okay, before we begin the items, I'll ask each Commissioner to state their name and whether they have a conflict of interest, starting with Mr. Anderson.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Maria Wynden, no conflicts.
Jayman Rowan, no conflicts. I do want to add really quickly that if the meeting's still going by 6:45, I need to slip out. So I won't be stomping off in anger. I just have another commitment.
Dionne Turley, no conflicts.
Brian Smith, no conflict.
Deborah Jensen, no conflict.
Edward Jones, no conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflict.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflict.
Thank you, Commissioners. All right, item one this evening. Celeste Kennard, Acting Joaquin Neighborhood Chair, requests an amendment to Section 14. 34.290 of the Provo City Code to add East Center Street as a design corridor. And this is for the Joaquin, Mazur, Foothills, and Provo's neighborhoods. And our staff member tonight presenting this is Josh Oost.
Thank you. So, recent development proposals in the Center Street corridor, which ranges from 200 East to the roundabout at the western edge of the Utah State Hospital campus. Recent development proposals in that area have led the adjoining neighborhoods to be concerned that the existing development regulations in the area do not sufficiently address the unique conditions and character of the Center Street corridor. As a result of that, those four neighborhoods have come together to, in working with planning staff, to draft a design corridor ordinance for that area. There are currently four design corridors on the map. There are additional design corridors designated to be studied or adopted in the general plan, and this Center Street area is one of those areas that was listed as an area to be adopted as a design corridor. The draft you have in front of you is the result of the process of taking the initial input from the neighborhood and working together with them iteratively to deliver a draft for your consideration. Our recommendation tonight is that we, is a recommendation for continuance so that we have additional time to discuss and review this at the next planning committee meeting if necessary. And I'm ready to answer any questions or provide additional explanation or description of the ordinance as needed.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners? Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Oost, in the meantime, if somebody were to apply for a project in this area, would we anticipate that they'd be held to...
This is pending legislation, yes. And this map on the screen illustrates those properties that would be impacted by the proposed ordinance. The only, except for some of those that are missing are condominium projects that don't have parcels surrounding their perimeter.
Maybe along the same lines. Are you aware of any projects where application was made to where somebody would be able to proceed through an approval process?
There are no projects that have, that are entitled or have been applied for in this area that would be adversely impacted by this. There is one project that has been applied for, which is a rear addition to a residential structure that has been used as a commercial office for a long period of time. And they're just contemplating a rear addition matching in size and materials to the existing building.
Okay. I'm really thinking of the 9th East.
Right. That, as that zone change application was denied by the city council, the development proponent has not submitted a new application for that project.
We're anticipating a new application, but it has not been submitted. The reason why we recommended a continuance on this is typically with new legislation like this, we would have brought it to you in a study session first. Because our study session was so full with other items tonight, there wasn't opportunity to do that.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Ms. Wynden?
You said continue it to our meeting on the 23rd. Are we having...
No, no, to the, to the next available meeting, which would be the first meeting in January.
Sorry, I misunderstood. Mr. Rowan?
Yeah, I mean, just obviously, as many others on the commission were imagining, I'm sure, was, was that most recent development that we heard. And this kind of formalizes and codifies what we were talking about in, in that meeting. So I really like it for that reason and things like that. I did wonder, and I just, I may have missed it in reading this, but I didn't see any recommendations about fencing. Is that something that people talked about, regulated in any way, the kind of fencing on the properties?
There was no mention of fencing in the draft document, in the working draft provided to staff by the neighborhoods.
Again, I don't know if there, it seems to me that like there might be value in doing so. You know, if you're, if you're going as far, for example, to say the following materials are prohibited, vinyl siding, aluminum siding, I don't know if it'd be worth thinking about, you know, do we, do we prohibit vinyl fencing or something like that. It would be, in my mind, a shame to have a vinyl fence on Center Street, you know, really, really visible. But this is, you know, vinyl fences are one of my, you know, design pet peeves.
They're on your faux pas list.
Yeah, bogeyman. So, that may be worth thinking about. There, I mean, there has been some really nice fencing. There's one home, I think on the intersection of Center Street and 400 East that did a great job of, you know, of building a new fence that is very much in keeping with the design and feel of that, of that section, that corridor. I'd love to, and I don't know if we just got lucky there that they did that, it would seem, or, but it would, it seems like it might be worth being really explicit about what we, what we don't want to see and what we would like to see in terms of fencing.
And we'll take that into consideration. That's a very good point. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah. We, I had heard actually about maybe a historic design corridor. Is this the same thing? Representative Thurston was...
This, he is behind this.
Okay.
Yes, this is the...
One and the same.
Yes, this is the design corridor for that area.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'd like to invite the neighborhood chair or chairs to approach the podium if they have any comments. Seeing none, any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter? If not, I'll turn it back over to the Commissioners for a motion.
Madam Chairman, I would move that we continue item number one on the agenda, pending further discussions and study.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Wynden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will forward a request for continuation of item one on tonight's agenda to the municipal council. Okay, item two is actually, let's see. Item two and three I will read in together. One is administrative and one is legislative. Item two, Nathan Chappell requests a zone change from A 1.5 to R 1.8 for 2.29 acres of property located at approximately 1282 North Geneva Road in the Lakeview North neighborhood. And item three, Nate Chappell requests final subdivision approval, subject to approval of a zone change for 2.32 acres of property located at approximately 1282 North Geneva Road in the Lakeview North neighborhood. And these items will be presented by Austin Corr.
Thank you. I won't go into much detail on this. This is the fourth time that the Planning Commission has seen this item since beginning in 2013. You have a history of what the decision has been each time that it's been heard in your staff report. In short, the last recommendation that you made in September was forwarded on to the municipal council. That was for the R 1.8 zone. The council chose to deny the project with one caveat. They provided the applicant an opportunity to resubmit and address all comments and concerns that have been expressed over the last four years of the project. And if the applicant were to make a resubmital, that it would come back to you. And so that's why the item is here. A couple weeks ago, the applicant resubmitted documentation. Staff has reviewed that. And in short, it is substantially the same project still. This is the original subdivision that you heard just a couple weeks ago and has been for quite some time now. There was one small change made, and that's to Lot 7 that's highlighted there with the red circle, in an attempt to meet the zone requirements, which does not address those concerns, nor the other concerns that have been raised by staff. So, at this time, staff is recommending that you deny the R 1.8 zone still, which was your recommendation back in September. However, with the history behind this project and the frequency of it returning again with little change, we do feel that it would be beneficial for the city to actually zone this property for R 1.10, which sends a clear expectation of what is needed. It removes the continual hearings again and again and places it back in the hands of basically just staff to work through the subdivision to comply with the R 1.10 zone without relying on any kind of additional documentations or development agreements or what have you, which is really the, the difficult thing to come to conclusion on with the failure to, to meet ordinance that has been done, or that has been presented so far by the applicant. Any other questions?
Any questions for Mr. Corey?
I do have one question, and that is, are you mandated to bring everything that comes to you to this body, or can you summarily say, no, we're not taking this to the commission?
By law, if an applicant makes, or if, if a petitioner makes a request by application, the city has to consider.
Okay, thanks.
Are the list of items in either an R 1.10 case or an R 1.8 case, are they lengthy? Are they numerous? What would the applicant have to do? Can you give us a feel for, for that, either scenario?
Sure. Provo City Code outlines what's required with each application. As part of a zone change, the, the big item in this particular case, Provo City Code requires a zone change to be accompanied by a subdivision that meets the zone that you're requesting. The subdivision that's being proposed does not meet the R 1.10 or the R 1.8 zone by reasons of lot width and lot depth in various different cases. Based on that, and then incomplete application items such as the engineering requirements that are found in that checklist that just simply have not been provided at this point. But that's why we feel that moving forward with an R 1.10 zone, we know what the R 1.10 would produce. We don't, we don't rely on that subdivision being completely vetted out at this time, and you place it in the hands of city staff. So our engineers can then take and review and make sure that it still meets those ordinance requirements, but it eliminates the need of continually coming back to multiple hearings.
Any other questions for staff?
I might be misremembering some things, but one of the concerns I might have about changing the zoning to R 1.10, there was a concern about access, if I remember right, both to construct, just simply to access out onto the state road for the cul-de-sac itself. Was there also some direction given to try to incorporate a connection from this project to property to the north?
That's some of the concerns. Now, that relates primarily to the subdivision application and not the zone change request. But again, because of that code requirement that ties the two together, it, it gets convoluted in that way. As far as the access requirements and inhibiting potential for development to the north, the subdivision application does require the submittal of a conceptual integrated development plan, which demonstrates an ability for that northern property. It's not regulatory, but it demonstrates that they're not prohibiting it from developing with the same kind of rights that they're requesting.
Okay. And UDOT and getting approval for an access out onto Geneva Road, that seems doable?
Well, it, I would imagine it is. But again, that is one of the items. Now, with the latest submittal that was made a couple weeks ago, the applicant did contest that they're, they were providing the UDOT approve, proof of UDOT approval. And that, I apologize, that JPEG, I remember trying to put it in and it was large enough that it wouldn't come through. But the UDOT approval that is granted on the site right now is for a driveway access for the two lot subdivision that has already been approved, and that's not anything of the discussion. It's simply just the process that they need to go through. And, and that would be tied to the subdivision that city staff would ensure that was taken care of as part of that.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'd like to invite the applicant, Nathan Chappell, to approach the podium. Please state your name. And we'll restrict this discussion to item number two, which is concerning the zoning review.
Should be okay now.
I don't know if the microphone's working. Oh, you just got it, okay.
I had a retinal detachment, attachment, and a tear, and so I'm not going to be able to see much. But to answer some of the questions, I asked what specifically they're looking for, and he referred me to about 31 pages of requirements. I went through and checked them off, and I think I've gone through them all. And I, I thought that, I talked to somebody in planning, and I thought that angle change is what we have to do to get our R 1.8 approved. But whatever is on this disc is what I've done and have submitted. But I don't think I can see it to tell you what it is. We'll try.
They're trying to call it up right now.
Hopefully, it's on the disc. As far as UDOT goes, they have issued a letter saying that they're allowing a subdivision entrance off that thing, which I don't have the copy tonight, but I can't see that, but maybe you can, you can read it and just quickly go through it.
And this is a memorandum that you issued to the city planning staff?
What was that?
This is a memorandum you issued to the city planning staff?
I didn't hear that.
This was a memorandum that you issued to city planning staff, is that correct?
Yeah. This is my application. You can keep it rolling along. And...
Austin, is there anything in here?
No.
Nothing here.
That's just a development agreement that we came up with to try to satisfy a neighborhood. And you can just keep it going along. I can't really tell what you're looking at, but it shows that we did comply with everything Mr. Winters was asking for. If you've read it, just keep, keep moving it along.
Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review this? Was there anything else you wanted to add to your presentation this evening?
What's that?
Was there anything else you would like to add to your presentation this evening?
Well, just that everything, we, I think we've complied with about everything. Engineering has submitted. Can you, there are a bunch of those, or did you come to an end?
So, the latest submittal that was sent in two weeks ago has been reviewed by the CRC, and it's come back with most departments with, the exception of the fire department and the parks department noting that they're still missing items and that changes are still required and that items aren't being addressed. So, based on the CRC report and what city staff is telling me, what's, what's being stated as being resolved does not appear to be so.
Thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Howard?
Well, I don't really have any questions. Sounds like a communication problem. You're turning stuff in. The city's saying that they don't have all they need. And it makes it hard for the Planning Commission to come to terms with this.
Well, I'd like to know specifically what they don't have. I mean, I submitted the engineering reports. They've been signed and stamped, and I don't know what I haven't submitted.
Well, I think normally when someone turns in everything, and I imagine you would tell them, we've got a complete, we've got a complete package, and you're good to take it with the, to the commission with a recommendation of X, Y, or Z, or yes, no, maybe.
Yeah, that's correct. And, and what I mentioned to you of that CRC process, once reviews are completed, there's actually a report that's generated. So in those comments, staff has outlined everything that's missing. That was done back in May with the original submittal of this application, and then again with this last resubmittal.
Mr. Anderson?
I referred to different things. I printed 31 pages off. I've gone through the conceptual plan. Everything should be on that. I don't see it up here because I'm not on the disc.
That will be the following item.
What's that?
The subdivision plan.
Well, everything that I, was asked for, the conceptual plan, the subdivision, the engineering, the engineer staff, the...
There are evidently some items that were missing from the application, and I'm sure staff would be happy to discuss those with you further.
I don't know of any.
Mr. Anderson, did you have a question for the applicant?
And maybe staff as well. I guess as I see it, the most fundamental deficiency is that we don't have a proposed plan for the development because of lots one and seven that meet the requirements. Is that, relative to what we as a planning commission might be most concerned about?
Correct. And, and then when that comes to the zone change request, Mr. Chappell is proffering a development agreement, which is, so that's where the difficulty lies in, as it relates to the zone change request, is development agreements generally rely on a proposed plan that's meeting what you're requesting.
Yeah.
And without, without that buttoned up, it's difficult to execute something like that.
I mean, I assume any other deficiencies, any engineering studies or things like that, those conceivably could get worked out pretty well between staff and the applicant.
Exactly.
But it's really the design.
Right, those would be administrative in process.
Can I ask a question? It looks like the two existing residents don't perfectly fit within the, the setbacks. Is that going to change with a zone change? Would the setbacks change, or, I mean, is that grandfathered in? How does that work?
The original development, those existing residents were actually built on a two lot subdivision. In short, basically the center line of that road was one long lot line that went through both. That's where the homes were permitted under, and that's where they're legally recognized by the city. In order for the applicant or anyone to go through and now subdivide that property in a different way, because those existing residents are there, they would have to adjust lot lines or, or do whatever they need to, to not create a nonconformity. So there would be no such thing as grandfathering in a, a new nonconformance being created.
So these two, I mean, it looks like they don't work then, because one has a little corner sticking out and the other one has like a garage or another extrusion sticking out. There's setback. Am I reading that right?
Um, the, well, I'd have to look closer at lot two. I, I believe that that actually does, this is a little deceiving because it's referring to a typical, typical buildable area. And that's, that's the applicant's engineer identifying those. Those aren't actually the city setback requirements.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Howard?
I'll try to be brief. Mr. Chappell, my understanding of both these things, maybe precursory, is that you're applying for an R 1, or you're applying for an R 1.8 because you're concerned you're going to lose lot one if you don't get that zone. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Basically, lot one without the R 1.8 would be able to be developed.
What I'm hearing is that your application under either scenario is incomplete. And so, you know, I would turn to the staff and say, under either scenario, is there a way to, to get this through in a legitimate, normal process? But I'm not, I don't believe that's the case.
The answer to your question is yes. Let's just zone it R 1.10. We're tired of dealing with it as a staff. The neighborhood's tired of dealing with this and coming out to these meetings. We're confident that R 1.10 follows the pattern of the neighborhood generally, so we're okay with that. Regardless of what submittals we might get or might not get, our recommendation is R 1.10.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, if not, Mr. Chappell?
Okay. An R 1.10 will not work for lot one. So that has to be, just trying to decide, what do we do with lot one?
Is removed from the subdivision?
In that subdivision. In other words, there'd be a piece of ground standing there. I talked to the staff and figured out how we would make lot one, I mean, lot seven and six work in an R 1.8. So, an R 1.8 would work without going through a, a zone change, I mean, not a zone change, but a text amendment to change the setbacks. So, I guess that's always something that's been heard and talked about in the past by the city and by the council, but I haven't, I don't know where they are on that. So, that's the reason the request for an R 1.8 to get moving forward. Some of the people in the, that are close to, in the neighborhood there, they would like to see it get going. We've had a meeting, and I think they're on board with it. Is Beth here tonight?
We'll be asking the neighborhood chairs to come forth next.
Oh, anyway, yeah, the R 1.8 would get us moving forward without, you know, further delays and trying to figure out what to do with lot one.
Okay, I appreciate your presentation. We'd like to invite the neighborhood chairs to come up next and speak. Thank you. Any neighborhood chairs present, if you would please state your name?
Good evening. I bet you guys are sick of seeing me as I am being here sometimes. Beth Alagood, Lakeview North Neighborhood Chair. This has been a very long and drawn-out process, and we appreciate community development and the diligence and work that they've done on this. At this point in time, the neighborhood is just looking for a way to move forward, and we trust that the R 1.10 zone that community development is proposing will take care of many of the, of the issues that we have as a neighborhood, and we're putting it in the hands of community development at this time. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Are there any neighborhood, any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to approach the podium? If not, any residents or citizens who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I'll turn it back over to the planning Commissioners for further discussion and/or a motion.
I would like to make a motion. Seeing as how the applicant has requested R 1.10 zoning twice in the past, I move that on item two, that we change the zone from A 1.5 to R 1.10 for 2.29 acres of property located at approximately 1282 North Geneva Road in the Lakeview North neighborhood.
Just a note, item two, you're making a recommendation, since it is a legislative item.
I'm sorry?
Item number two, you're making a recommendation. Your motion was to change the zone, but you're recommending that the council... Your motion was to change the zone, but you're recommending that the council...
Recommending, yes.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Commissioners, a vote on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see no opposed, so we will forward a positive recommendation to municipal council to rezone Item Two property to R1.10. And Item Number Three, again, Austin and Corey will present Item Three.
So, there's, this is just the subdivision application tied to that. In this particular instance, it is an administrative item, so you are the final body to make the determining factor. In short, the application is incomplete and fails to meet ordinance requirements regardless of the zone that's being requested, and so staff is recommending denial of the application.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Jones?
As been pointed out, there appears to be a communication problem. Would the planning, would the, would the planning department be able to put in writing just what's lacking, or are you permitted to do something like that?
It is in writing already.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't characterize it as a communication problem. I would characterize it as a compliance problem. The applicant has been given the comments from all the departments in writing multiple times. That's our standard process. It's always put in writing, and it's always given to the applicant. We don't seem to get back what we keep asking for. So, to me, it's not a communication problem, it's a compliance problem.
I was trying to be kind. But if it's in writing and maybe it can be presented in this, in this sort of a setting, then there wouldn't, we wouldn't have this disparity here of opinion because the applicant feels like he's provided everything, but if you could have something in writing that we could hand to him and show him, "Well, here's where you're lacking," I don't know. Maybe you've already done that.
I think that's what they're saying, that they have already done that, and we're not getting anywhere, so.
More than once.
In other words, I don't, I don't think it's fair to ask the staff to do something, again, that they've clearly done over and over again. That's my take on where we're at right now.
Email's cheap. I'm happy to email it, as, email that CRC report as many times as you would like me to. I can set up an automatic-generated one if you would like me to even.
Any other questions for staff from the commissioners? If not, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Chapel if he would like to present his case on this matter, Item Three. That's for the final subdivision approval.
Okay, I, I don't know what hasn't been submitted, but I'm not sure if they've even looked at the last submitted, so I emailed into them. But anyway, I guess if they'll tell me specific, I'll be happy to go do that. But as an R110, we've got a problem to start with, with that Lot One, trying to decide what to do with it. So, we're, if we don't get the R18, we're getting in the water again until we come up with a text amendment or some other, you know, like, some way to get past that 90 feet, where they're requiring 100 feet in R110 on the corner lot. R18, a corner lot, they're only requiring 90 feet, which is what we have in an R18. So, with an R18, we'd get moving forward, which the neighbor, well, the neighbors that I've been talking to would like to see happen. But I don't know of anything that hasn't been submitted. I've gone through Mr. Winters, I've gone through the energy department, I've answered all of their questions. I've got them on there, to them, got the engineer's signatures, I got you dot's signatures. So, I'm at a loss as to what we're lacking, other than the fact that Lot One won't comply in an R110, okay? So, now we've got to try to decide what to do. So, I thought the best scenario for the whole thing, it's all semantics, basically. We've got 10,000 square foot lots plus every place. The R18 with the agreement, I think, would satisfy, as far as I know, the neighbors that I've talked to would be happy with that, as long as we're not going to try to throw in more lots. But the density of four lots per acre, I'm way under that. I think four lots per acre would put me up there at nine lots. We're talking seven, so I don't see the issue with the R18 zone. So, but if that's the case, then we're, we're back to square one, trying to decide how to deal with Lot One.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any further questions for Mr. Chapel? Thank you very much. Would the Lakeview Neighborhood Chair like to comment on this?
It's snowing outside, so I'm going to have to scrape off my car anyway. I just, again, want to thank community development for all their diligence and hard work on this, and the neighborhood has all confidence that they will work it all out. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this matter? If not, I'll turn it back over to the planning commissioners for discussion. Mr. Anderson?
It seems like in light of the recommendation that we just unanimously made, that we really are limited in our options. So, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and move that we deny the proposed application on Item Number Three.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Could we have a vote, please? All those in favor of denying the applicant's?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on Item Three then, we'll forward a, or we will actually deny the final subdivision Okay, Item Four, Prevo City Council Office requests ordinance amendments to Section 6.06 and 14.38 for signage within the city. This has citywide impact and will be presented by Brian Maxfield.
Oh, yeah, I know, I went quiet there. Thank you. This item involves Section 606, as stated and shown on the screen, and 14.38. 606, technically, you don't need to recommend on, however, since it is tied in with what your amendment is to 1438, we thought it might be cleaner just to involve both of those. Section Six is really business licenses, and the attempt here is to look at some of the signage requirements that the city has and open them up a little bit that allows for what's called low churn and high, or churn, low churn and high churn on the signage, meaning the change rate. And then it also adds, I think, as you'll see in the text amendment, it looks at brightness and other conditions that are there. One of the thoughts was putting it as a business license makes it a little bit easier to enforce rather than going out and having to take pictures, go to court, show all those things. If you do it through business licenses, it's, it's an easier review. You've got an affidavit you sign each year that you're in compliance with the conditions. I know Commissioner Anderson brought up a point about, you know, what point does it become a billboard if over the weekend they start showing advertisements or movies, advertisements for off-site locations and things like that? That's certainly something we'd have to look at and see what kind of enforcement, if we had complaints or people noticed it. And I think the process would be definitely to document it and then possibly do the business license. Of course, as we further discussed, most of the time, the city's reluctant to pull a business license on retail businesses, and I don't think you'd pull the full business license, which you may do is somehow make them turn off their sign until they're in compliance. I'm not sure what that compliance would be, if they say, "We won't do it anymore," you know, or what it would be. I don't think there's any fine imposed or anything else, so that's, it's a good question, but I think it's kind of up in the air. I don't know, I cannot think of an instance where I've seen a problem, and so we may just have to deal with it if it comes up later. Are there any questions on the ordinance itself, the ordinance changes, amendments?
No questions from the commissioners. Are there any neighborhood chairs who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none, any members of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Okay, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for discussion or a motion. Ms. Wynden?
I just have a question when it comes to the brightness. You, it says on the back that any sign that was in operation prior to May 28th, 2013, that is not reasonably capable of complying with the brightness standard in this section. What is reasonably capable? What does that mean? Meaning that they can't convert?
It's open for interpretation. You would have to think, you know, what would prevent them from complying? Offhand, I can't think of really what that would be, because you can always reduce a sign if they're talking about it being too economically expensive to change out lights or something, I'm not sure, but usually those are, gee, what do we call that? The roam?
Dim.
Yeah, the dim is, you can reduce power to something, or dim lights. So, I can't think offhand what that situation would be. The May 28th, of course, is when they implemented a lot of the electronic sign ordinance, and so it grandfathered certain things, but the idea of brightness is more of a safety and more of an impact, I think, on neighbors than almost any other component of that. And I think it was an attempt to say, unless, you know, you've got to give us a reason, and nobody can think of what it is right now, you know?
But, but this proposal would help unify the code for all businesses.
Right.
With signs. I got to tell you, as having been through this for 20 years with signs in different places, my institution can't have a sign, but the bank stone-stowaway can. And, and I think it makes a lot of sense to, from a fairness point of view and from a business applicant, they have to come out and take pictures. When you buy these signs, they're expensive, you have to train someone to use them, every school has one, elementary school included. So, I think, I think just from management perspective, can there be abuses? Absolutely, but really, the challenge is for someone to get one when right across the street your competitor has one.
Exactly. It's trying to level the playing field, and it should. I think it did try to prevent little guys from jumping up and down on the sign, they're distractive items, but...
Any other questions or comments? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amendment to Section 6.06 and 14.38 of the city ordinances.
I second.
And just to clarify, this will be making a recommendation to municipal council?
Strong.
Seconded by?
Andrew Howard.
Mr. Howard.
This, yeah, recommend approval.
Doesn't say so in the recommendation, but it started.
Yeah.
Do, let's vote. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council for Item Four?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, forward a positive recommendation to municipal council for Item Four, and that was unanimous. Item Five, the Prevo City Community Development Department requests an ordinance amendment to Section 14.06.020 to adopt a definition for road, citywide impact, and again, Brian Maxfield will present this.
Thanks. This one, we actually could fit on the screen even after enlarging it. It's probably the shortest one you'll ever see proposed. I would try to give some background in the staff report. It is really a result of an action that we had, and our attorneys just felt it might save some time and effort if we just made that simple change, that that would later be another, an argument. Fairly simple, and you're wondering...
Better definition, semantics, right?
Is there anyone who needs a discussion on the item?
Any questions for Mr. Maxfield? Nope. If not, I'll look to, there's no one, no neighborhood chairs or public present, so we won't have any discussion. Commissioners?
Motion to recommend approval.
Mr. Smith?
Forward with a positive recommendation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rowan? All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation on Item Five?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll forward a positive recommendation for Item Five to municipal council, and that was unanimous.
Can we create a consent agenda where we put things like that in there?
All right, and our last item for the evening, Item Six. The Prevo City Community Development Department requests ordinance amendments to Sections 14.34, .285, and 14.34.287, which are residential design standards, and these have citywide impact. And Mr. Ardmore will present.
Unfortunately, mine's not as short as the previous one. So, what we're trying to do here, this first section is just correcting the reference in the individual zones for medium density, high density, and I think campus mixed-use zones, or referring to the wrong design standard section, so we're just correcting that. The next, Section 1434.285, just making clarification, it was kind of ambiguous to staff and to developers of what primary could mean. You could come up with a couple of different reasonable interpretations of what that could mean. So, just clarifying that with the 51%, and then cleaning up some of those material options to, to try to make clear standards for residential buildings that will benefit the city. The bulk of the amendment is in 287. We've, we've had a few products come in recently that had to comply with 287 and have had not the result that the city or the staff was intending, as well as the language before was a bit ambiguous as it was in 285. So, what staff is suggesting is just cutting out the prior building materials section and, and implanting this new section that goes through major and minor materials and really defines what those can be and how much is allowed, allowing for some wiggle room for some architectural differences. This, like, Item One is being proposed to be continued, again, for the same reason where you, you usually would see this as a study item, but because study was pretty full today, we wanted to get it moving, so we thought we'd introduce it to you here tonight, then hopefully get a decision on our next planning commission meeting.
So, we can ask all our questions there, potentially?
You could, or you can ask them, either way.
Very good.
Any questions for Mr. Ardmore? Mr. Jones?
I'm not trying to be funny here, but I'd like a definition of residential. Does this, is this a single-family dwelling, or is, or could this be a multi-story apartment complex?
So, yes. 285 is referring to typically, single-family homes are being built in those areas. 287 primarily will be anything from townhomes up to apartment buildings, but, but yes, it could apply to, to every type of residential dwelling.
Okay, I, I notice here that the IFIS system is, is prohibited as a major building element?
Correct.
That's a wise decision.
Well, good.
I have, I have experience with that, and it can deteriorate very quickly. However, it seems like this would allow the IFIS system to be used as, as a decorative trim, like coins or something like that.
Forty-nine percent.
Forty, yeah, that's it. Still quite a bit.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Gables.
It doesn't, doesn't eliminate it.
You're referring to Section 285?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at Paragraph Two. Prohibited major materials.
Oh, and two...
Materials are prohibited as major materials unless otherwise approved. So, does that imply that you could use it as trim?
No. So, the next section has your minor materials.
Okay.
So, you won't find it there either. So, it's per... So it's prohibited for being a major material, and it's not in the list of approved minor materials. So essentially, it's not allowed.
So it's not allowed?
Correct.
Good. It's junk. And it, well, it's, it's a bad material, and a building using that would look really shabby after a year or two.
Right, and I think we've seen that.
Can you describe IFIS, AFIS, IFIS?
Think of, think of using styrofoam as, as your facade or as your facing material.
Stucco-looking styrofoam?
Yeah, and, and they can make it look like rockwork or brickwork or whatever, but it's basically styrofoam. So just kind of picture that, okay? Now picture a teenager with a quarter going up and doing this to it, or throwing a baseball at it.
Kicking a soccer ball against the side of the house or something, yeah.
Or it's often not detailed correctly, and water gets behind it and rots out the structure of the building.
Yeah.
And grows mold.
But you can just go up and, you know, you can pick at it, and then the building looks terrible.
That brings to mind a way to slow down growth until we get the sewage treatment plan fixed, just change all the standards to brick.
On all four facades.
Everywhere, yep.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Are there any neighborhood chairs who would like to speak to this matter? Any members of the public who would like to speak to this matter? If not, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for discussion or motion.
Aside from maybe a little bit more discussion about the IFIS, I'd be very inclined. In fact, do you mind if I just go ahead and make a motion, Madam Chair?
Deal.
I move that we continue item 6 to the next available agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All those in favor of continuing item 6 to the next January meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will forward a recommendation to continue item 6 to municipal council, and that was unanimous as well.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
So be it, meaning adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy holidays.